Before, we'll start with roll call attendance. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Burnt?
Here.
Councilmember Palmer?
Here.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Here.
Councilmember Borton?
Here.
Mayor DeVeard?
Here.
My apologies, Councilmember Cavanagh.
I'm here too.
Thank you.
Here all night.
That's good. We'll need you all night. Item two is adoption of the agenda.
Hey, Madam Mayor.
Hey, Mr. Borton.
Will we adopt the agenda? Oh, strike that, hang on. Item 3M of the consent agenda is, has been removed. Mrs. Mary? And with that change, I move we adopt the agenda.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to adopt the agenda as changed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Item three is our consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
We approve the consent agenda as amended for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. If there is no discussion, Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes. There are no items moved from the consent agenda, so we'll jump right into department reports and start with the Fire Department's annual report update. And welcome the Chief to the podium.
Madam Mayor, Council, good afternoon. I'm a little bit disappointed. I thought all the chairs were for us, but I do want to welcome the Boy Scouts, so glad you're here. With that, we'll jump into our 2019 annual report, a look back and a look ahead. Chris showed me how to work this thing. There we go. So to start off with, want to introduce two new members to our team. The first would be J.D. Hendrick. He has already got nicknames. I'm happy to share those with you after this for a small fee, but I didn't put him on here. He did accept the position of EMS Division Chief. J.D., you want to wave and say hello? This was a position that you as council approved in our FY '20 budget. We're excited to have J.D. on board. As I explained to our crews when I announced his acceptance, probably one of the best interviews in 10 years I've ever heard. J.D. came well-prepared. He's got a great vision for EMS. He's ready to rock, so we're excited to have him on board. He began October 21st, some of those initial priorities that J.D.'s going to be focusing on. One is engaging with our local assisted living facilities here in Meridian. Our call volume has kind of gone up to those facilities. We're looking forward to J.D. going out, engaging with those business owners, those assisted living facilities, to see if we can help educate and work together on decreasing call volume in those facilities. We're excited about that. Rescue Task Force, I'll speak to this a little bit later, but this is something now unfortunately that the Fire Department EMS personnel are involved in with active shooters. J.D.'s going to head up our Rescue Task Force training and then also continue our great EMS department training amongst the other day-to-day stuff that he is doing every day. We also, kind of last minute, just a recent hire collectively with the Police Department, I think you all know. Stephanie Galbraith is our Public Safety PIO. She's loving the Fire Department, that's all I'm going to say. I won't rib the Police Department anything more than that, but we're happy to have Stephanie on board, much needed. Thank you. Look at operations. This would be January 1st, year-to-date. We look at data as far as performance in a calendar year, not a fiscal year. That matches our dispatch center. That's when they start their data and that's how we analyze it. So if we look at January 1st to today, and we look at our emergent critical responses, and those are defined as things like structure fires, cardiac arrest, stroke, heart attacks, extrication calls from car wrecks. We've had 629 critical responses year-to-date. Out of those, and if you look at our shoot time, shoot time again is defined as the time the bells go off in the station till the time we roll out the door. That for us is a big performance indicator of how receptive we are to the community and how quickly we respond to their needs. Our average right now is a minute four and our goal is a minute 30. Our crews are doing an outstanding job getting the bell and getting out, and so we're very proud of them for that. Our travel time goal to those 629 critical responses is 4 minutes and 37 seconds. That's our average. Our goal is five minutes or less. So again, we're meeting our goal there. Very proud of that. If you look across all responses year-to-date, that would be our critical responses, our emergent responses, and then our non-emergent responses. Right now, we're at 5,051 total responses. I did this three times because it struck me odd, but our shoot time for all responses is a minute four. We ran that dataset three different times and came up with the same answer. So again, that is a testament to our crews and their responsiveness to our community. The travel time average for all responses is five minutes and two seconds.
So Chief, is that an average? So are all your stations hitting that same time?
That's an average across all of our stations.
I know, but do you look at that? Do you see a difference between stations?
We do. There's some variables, station to station, depending on the crew configuration, whether they have a truck, an engine, what their apparatus are. We see some variable. We report that every month to our battalion chiefs, quarterly, I'm sorry, every quarter to our battalion chiefs, so they can see the performance of their stations and their shift.
Cool. Thanks.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton.
To that point, kind of a nerdy question, but you could share data per station. Can you also share the median time per station?
The median time?
Yeah, as opposed to the average?
We haven't polled medians. This is where the mayor and I have had these conversations. The fire service is a little bit unique in that in our dataset and performance across the nation, we also looked at what's called a fractile response time. And really, that's saying, how often do we hit this goal? 90% of the time, 80% of the time, 70% of the time? We can capture that data. We've never looked at it from a mean perspective, taking in standard deviations on both ends, but we do look at fractiles and we also gauge that internally.
You probably could, though.
I'm sure we could.
Yeah.
It's numbers.
We could.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
So a couple of other interesting graphs when it comes to operations. This one surprised me a little bit on the left, and that's days of the week and calls for service. Typically, in the Fire Department, you will see a very low day and a very high day. We are pretty standard across the board. That Sunday low, from a statistical standpoint, a data standpoint, is not enough to cause us to really open our eyes. So across the board, Sunday through Saturday, we're fairly consistent in the amount of calls we're going on. If you look at the right side of the graph, this is very common in public safety. We ramp up about 7 o'clock in the morning. That's when everybody's going to work. Throughout the day, we stay fairly consistent, and then you see a pretty large spike at 5 o'clock at night. That's everybody going home from work. And you can see that is higher than the 7 o'clock. People want to get home. They're a little bit more impatient. That's what we attribute that to. They come back, they eat dinner about 6 o'clock in the evening, and then you see us go up again and kind of spike again at 8:00 p.m. Truly, what we've captured in that is a lot of folks go home, they eat dinner, and then they have medical emergencies after dinner. And that's why you see that spike up around 8 o'clock at night. We start to ramp down. You can see that graph go from left to right down to midnight. You can see our low point throughout that 24-hour shift as far as time of day is 4 o'clock in the morning. That's our lowest point. It makes sense to me. But we're still running calls at 4:00. On our Prevention Division, we have had 1,052 initial building inspections year-to-date. If you bring in our re-inspections, our complaint inspections, and even the firework inspections, the total is 2,908 total inspections by our Prevention Division. With those, we found 1,410 violations, the most common being extinguisher maintenance and exit sign lightings not working. We've resolved 1,323 of those. A lot of the ones that were still unresolved are fairly recent that our Prevention Division is working through. Something that was very interesting for me, we've been paying attention to this. This year-to-date, we've had 131 plan reviews for solar panel installs on roofs. That's something, solar's been around a long time, but our homeowners are starting to catch on. They're putting a lot of solar up on the roof to help with those energy costs. For us operationally, what we looked at, that presents a little bit of challenge. There are times when our truck company needs to go to the roof to cut a ventilation hole to let that fire and that heat, that smoke dissipate. So having solar panels on a roof has been interesting. We've been working through that operationally with our crews. They're aware of them. They know how to mitigate them. We actually just had a fire, Joe helped me out about three weeks ago, I believe, where we had solar panels on the roof, and we worked through it.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burnt.
So like how? You just like cut the solar panel? Yep, we do. Yep. We've worked with the solar manufacturers, the installers, to know how to cut those, how the power runs through those. We make sure that they put those just on one side of the roof if we can and only in a certain square footage of pattern, so we still have access to the roof. But something new to us.
Interesting. Never thought of that.
So Chief, do you work with the Fire or with the Building Department as they get permits on placement?
I believe the answer is yes, and I'm sure that Deputy Chief Bonjourneau can answer.
Madam Mayor, yes, we do. We're part of the workflow for solar panel installations. So they'll go through the Building Department, and I'm in the approval chain for them. And I review the plans to make sure that their panels are installed per the fire code.
Thank you.
Also in prevention, Council, you're aware of Compliance Engine. That's a vendor that we work with, specifically tracking inspection and maintenance of sprinkler systems, cooking hood systems, fire pumps, fire alarms. We just recently updated that agreement with Compliance Engine. For us, it's a zero-cost agreement. What happens is, these folks go out and they do the inspection, they report to Compliance Engine. There's a cost to the business. We updated that here recently, but we've had that agreement with Compliance Engine since 2015. The goal was to improve compliance with regards to maintenance and repair of these systems. To date, we've had 1,969 submitted reports through Compliance Engine. I'm happy to say we're 93% compliant. What that means is, the reports that have come in, everything has been in compliance with the maintenance and inspection of those. If you compare that against 2016, one year after we started this, we were 78% compliant. So what that means for us, if these systems are working properly, quite honestly, it means less calls in the future for us. We're very happy with that. We do have a 7% efficiency rate right now. That's a total of 138 reports submitted that are deficient. That's where our inspectors come in. They go out, visit the facility, and work with that business owner to make sure we get up to compliance with those systems. And as part of the cost recovery, I know Councilman Cavanagh, a lot of conversations about cost recovery. What does that look like? With the newest agreement with Compliance Engine, the Fire Department, based on the work we do, especially Chief Bonjourneau managing this program, and then our inspectors also going out to do the re-inspections, cost recovery year-to-date has been about $5,000. And then lastly, in our Prevention Division, 40 fires have been investigated. Our fire inspectors also are cross-disciplined in fire investigations, and so we've gone out and investigated 40 fires. Our Public Education Department, they're not busy. Car seat inspections, we've had 167 car seat inspections year-to-date. Of those inspections, we found 23 car seats that were not serviceable, meaning they were unsafe. We have a grant program. We're a grant funds us to provide car seats when we find this. So year-to-date, we have provided 23 car seats to those that came through and found that their car seats were unsafe. A story to that, that happened this year, folks came through, they were on their way to Mountain Home, they got a car seat inspection done on their way to Mountain Home, they rolled their car. That infant was safe. So that tells me that it's worth the time. Hands-only CPR classes, we've done 33 hands-only CPR classes, resulting in 2,160 folks going through the hands-only CPR. We've had 331 safety classes. These are really our school education programs. That resulted in 27,230 little ones and adults going through those classes. I don't know who has the clicker for those, but somebody's clicking. We have visited 554 homes for smoke alarm problems. And then we've had 15 CPR first aid certification classes in which 200 folks have been certified. These are typically people that work in daycares, childcares, lifeguards, et cetera. It's a lot. But beyond the numbers, the challenge that we have with prevention, I've always been a prevention advocate, but the challenge is pulling numbers and data. We typically think of things in reporting data. The challenge with this is, we don't know how many fires we prevented. We don't know how many falls we prevented. We don't know that, but we do have stories. And I'll tell two stories that we had happen this year. We had one student attend a safety class at school, learned about smoke detectors and how to evacuate a home. That student went home, talked to his mother, and said, "We need to make sure our smoke alarms are working." So they did that, and a few weeks later, they had a fire. Not only did the smoke alarms wake the family, but this student actually helped evacuate the mom and the grandmother from the home because he knew what to do. Another really cool story, something that our Pub Ed Division does, it's called a 911 simulator. So they actually go out to the schools and they simulate a 911 call, and they teach kids how to call 911, how to stay calm. Again, a student attended one of those. Later, one of his best friends had a very serious medical problem. He called 911. We got there, we did our thing. Firefighters are talking to this kid and said, "Man, I can't believe you did that." And he said, "It was a breeze. I learned this at school." That's cool stuff. That's the stories we can tell about fire prevention that the numbers maybe don't show. Very happy with that. Also looking at our performance, something that's very important to us, that we've been doing for several years now, is citizen feedback. I've mentioned this before to you as council. We have a survey function that we do to get feedback from our citizens. On the left there, that's on our homepage of the website. They can actually go and click the survey link, and that takes them to the right side where they can fill out an operation survey, a prevention survey, a public education survey. Oftentimes in those surveys, I see great comments coming through. And this one that I haven't read actually came through today. Unsure of the exact date, but unfortunately, the Meridian Fire Department has been out to my home many times over the past four years, as I have an elderly father, elderly ill father. They've always been courteous, respectful, and extremely helpful. That's the kind of feedback we're looking for as far as our department. If you look at the ratings that we've received over the last year, 151 operation surveys received, 100% of those met the expectations of the community, 81% of those exceeded. In our prevention inspections, we received 58 surveys to date, 100% met the expectations and 77% exceeded. And in our Public Education Division, we received 71 surveys, 100% of those met the expectation, and 83% exceeded. All I can say is, we have tremendous men and women in the Fire Department. I'm very proud of those numbers because, quite honestly, they're some of the most important numbers we can look at. I also want to mention real quick, not only for council, but for the community and those maybe watching, we have a tremendous outreach that we do, both through our website and through our Facebook page. We keep this very fresh. We keep it updated. Our Facebook page, I think, is second to none in the fire service anyway in Idaho. I don't know how to compare it to other departments in the city. I know that's maybe a challenge that I'm throwing out there, but Judy and Christie do a tremendous job keeping these updated. And I think for council, for those of you that thought you could dance, you might want to go back to our Facebook page. Check out Sparky. I'm just saying, he offers lessons part-time, so if you need those, let me know. Fire Station 6 update, I know Chief Butterfield's done a great job of getting you monthly updates with Fire Station 6. Went by there yesterday. It's looking great currently. We are under budget and we're ahead of schedule. We hope to keep it that way. So our possible grand opening is going to be pushed to late February or early March if things continue the way they are. We've talked about the components of this fire station, how it differs from our other fire stations. We're incorporating clean station standards, hard service floors, isolated turnout rooms. That will be the way we go moving forward. On Station 6's design, that will be the future as we move forward as well. The outside might change a little bit depending on where we put the next station, but certainly the interior, we have a great plan and we anticipate using that in the future in the fire station designs, hopefully to reduce a little bit of cost in that design phase. City strategic plan, the Fire Department is currently engaged in two tactics within 4A1 of the city strategic plan. That entire 4A1 was looking at the environmental threats our city faces and then doing a THIRA. THIRA is Target Hazard Identification Risk Assessment. And so we looked at that. We worked with every department in the city to look at how they would view an environmental or natural disaster and how they would mitigate that. So our tactic seven is to create an annual review and performance of systems and programs, and then tactic eight is to use that review for an annual update to you as council. This probably explains it a little bit better. These are two examples. Left side is the Fire Department, the right side is the Parks Department. We also did IT, Public Works, and the Police Department. We asked them to identify those risks. That's the first column is the item column. How often it would happen, that's the frequency column. The risk priority, is it high risk, medium risk, or low risk? And then the last column is, do you currently have that issue fully mitigated or not? And so part of our review will be working with departments that said, "We don't yet have this fully mitigated," to work towards getting it fully mitigated. There may be areas that we can't fully mitigate and have to rely on others to help us through that. That is really what a THIRA is, and so that will be the update that we provide to council every year on where we're at with regards to the natural and environmental risks. Our EMS JPA, Access Ada County City Emergency Services System, not to be confused with AICAM, I know they're very similar. AICAM is the emergency management agreement we have with Ada County. Access is our EMS system that we started years ago. I want to provide some highlights of the annual report that we did present to the JPA Board last month, of which Mayor Tammy sits on and attended and heard the report. Our Meridian cost share as part of that agreement is $33,500. That includes costs for medical direction, which is a state EMS Bureau mandate. QA, QI, Quality Assurance, Quality Improvement Review of our reporting, which is again a state mandate. Disposable medical supplies, those are the soft goods that we use on medical calls. Our RMS system is our database that we use to report fires and EMS incidents into. Again, that's both a state requirement as well as a federal requirement. And then it also helps pay for one paramedic or advanced life support shared training position. All of these things we would be doing on our own if we were not part of the EMS system. And on our own, those costs would be roughly in today's dollars, $259,000. So through this cooperative agreement and collaboration, we've saved ourselves roughly $225,000 today's dollars. Some additional highlights, there was a joint RFP for cardiac monitors and AEDs done this year. We are now going to be standard with the use of our cardiac monitors and AEDs throughout the EMS system of Ada County. That RFP was done in partnership with all the agencies. J.D. Hendrick sat on that committee for our Fire Department, was reviewed by our legal and our purchasing. The end result is, we're going to not only be standardized, but collectively, we saved ourselves about $7,500 on the cost of a cardiac monitor by doing it together and doing joint purchasing. So purchasing in bulk matters, and we've come to realize that. We also did a joint Homeland Security grant for active shooter equipment. I mentioned active shooter earlier. It's sad to say that we're a part of that now, but we are. But if we're going to play in that arena, we want to make sure our folks are safe and they're equipped with the right tools. So that included ballistic vests. It also included tactical medical equipment that when we team up with the Police Department and make entry into what they call the warm zone, we're fully prepared. Our portion of that grant for Meridian was $9,485 to the Department of Homeland Security. Pulse Point Engagement, I've talked about Pulse Point before, that's up 8%. And then looking at our total incidents last year in Meridian, 9,159 total incidents in Meridian. We responded, as we reported in our annual report, to 6,873 of those, which means 2,286 roughly were handled by an ambulance only. Part of what we did when we put this together was that, as a system, what are we responding to and are we sending the right resource? Oftentimes, our Fire Department was responding to non-critical calls that simply needed an ambulance transport. These are places like care facilities, urgent cares, homes where they're going to an appointment and all they need is an ambulance ride. They don't need a fire engine to respond and show up. So we believe we found efficiencies by working under this system in eliminating some unnecessary Another update, our Working Out of Class program. This was something that we agreed to in the last collective labor agreement. It's part of the 2018-20 CLA. Again, this is a voluntary program, as we discussed when we went through negotiations. I wanted to provide an update on that. Currently, we have one Working Out of Class captain who recently achieved that, and we have one Working Out of Class Battalion Chief. It's on A shift, Chief Campbell's shift. That Working Out of Class Battalion Chief covered seven shifts or 168 hours. If you look at that monetarily, you could say we saved $7,980. I put that in quotations. You've all sat in our boardroom. You've seen the staffing and how it plays out. When you move folks up, you know eventually we have a hole to fill. But the coverage of that in overtime would have been $7,980. We do have five engineers that have taskbooks out and are planning to take the Working Out of Class Captain's Test in December, so that'll add to that list. And then we also have several engineers' taskbooks that are going to be started in the near future. Along with that, we had a recent completion of the Fall Engineer Development Program, part of the requirement under the collective labor agreement, that will have eight more people eligible. So the program was a little slow to start, but it's gaining traction and doing well. We're very happy with this program. Couple of areas that were involved directly with the city and City Hall, one is our firewarden program. Two people from each department were voluntold. They were going to be part of this. And as part of that, you get this really good-looking lime-green vest. You get a clipboard, you get a pen, and a flashlight.
People fight for that position.
They did. They fought for it. I had all kinds of people knocking down my door to come and be a part of it. Those two fire wardens are responsible to make sure of the safe evacuation in the event of a fire alarm here at City Hall. Water, wastewater have their own plan in place. Parks Maintenance has their own plan in place. So we've gone through the education process. Those fire wardens have communicated with all their departments on where they go in the event of a fire alarm. So if you happen to be visiting one of the departments when the fire alarm goes off, there will be a fire warden in that really nice green, bright vest that will be telling you where to go once you get outside. Our next step in that is to drill it or exercise it to see how we do. I just can't tell you when.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burnt.
Mr. Cavanagh? Council Fire Warden? In the next line of rest?
Oh, very good point. You two...
Yeah, we need one during this.
You never know. We have to be prepared, Luke. You two can have a green vest.
Madam Mayor, for clarification, I get a vest and a flashlight?
And a clipboard, and a pen, and a flashlight. That's a great deal.
It's a future action item. Madam Mayor, Council President Borton, happy to serve in that role.
The other area that we are heavily involved in is snow crisis planning. We got rid of the term snowmageddon. We figured it'd run its course. Knock on wood, cross our fingers, we don't have that again. But we could have a snow crisis. This is beyond the day-to-day snow that we might get throughout the winter time. In the event we get a large snow, we do have a plan ready to be deployed. We have the folks ready and lined up to be a part of that leadership team that'll make that happen. If you're interested, and if we do get it going, the command post or the command center is in Fire Admins. You see a lot of bodies in there making things happen. Fire Department FY '20 Tactical Work Plan, we have moved away from long-term strategic plans and gone to 12-month tactical work plans. We find in the Fire Department, this works far better for us across the entire department as far as an understanding. We developed our priorities over three work sessions. The overarching priority for FY '20 is to make sure the things we are doing, the things we started are working and are institutionalized. Sometimes in business, and we're a department unlike or like every other, you move fast enough and you may start something and move on to the next thing. We want to make sure we look back and those programs and initiatives that we're working on, that they're institutionalized. That encompasses 17 tactical priorities. I want to thank IT and Public Works. IT developed this tactical planning database where we can track our progress on those. You'll see it's very similar to our city strategic plan, and Public Works had developed a database like this, so we want to thank both those departments for their help. Future fire station locations, looking forward, I get this question a lot, when is the right time? When's the next one? How far into the future are we going to do X, Y, and Z? And it's pretty tough to produce, but in the conversation I had with Council President Borton, I said, "If all things are equal, what's ideally your best time to build a fire station?" I said, "Every five years." And the reason I said that is that building a fire station, everything that goes into it, from ordering the fire engine, hiring the staff, doing the promotional process, is a three-year process in and of itself. Another two years would be ideal to allow our existing people time to develop in their role and get ready for the next one. It's part of that succession planning. We don't like being in crisis build, so for us, about every five years would be the ideal time to build a fire station. With that, Station 7, using current data and current projections, it looks like Station 7 will be in the northwest corner of Meridian, as that builds out with the Wyatt High School, some of the developments there along with the Chinon expansions. Station 8 is south Meridian, we have the land locked up for that. That ties in with the 77-acre regional park. We're working very closely with Parks Department on that, how to get those roadways built out and get ready for that station to go in. And then Station 1 relocation at some point will be a conversation. Station 1 is in a pretty dangerous spot right now in Franklin Road. We have a number of safety concerns with that, and it's slowing our times out a little bit. So those are the next three highlights. Station 9 and 10, as this council knows, our rural district is a great partner to the fire department. They typically go out and procure land ahead of anything that we think about as far as building. Station 9 and 10 will be in their purview down the road to find land for those. Those will be in the southwest corner of Meridian, especially as we grow out, out there. It's pretty, pretty bare right now, but it's going to grow like everything else. And then looking way forward, and this definitely could and will change over time, we anticipate 11 to 12 fire stations will be full build out. We say that because we have two areas, looking at GIS, working with Dave Tiede, Matt Hoffman and his group up there. There are two areas that we simply cannot hit in five minutes, no matter how hard we try. One is Eagle and Fairview, right around the village. The other one, believe it or not, is Meridian and Cherry Lane. Those are two areas that we simply can't hit in five minutes. So if that becomes acceptable to us, we won't need stations in those areas, but something to look forward to.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
Why can't you get to those? Just traffic?
Traffic is the biggest piece. If you just look at road miles, you would say we should be able to get there in five minutes from either Station 1 or Station 3. But when you look at traffic, those are the heavily, heavily trafficked areas in our city, and it's just really tough to get there.
There's a follow-up. There's some property over there, like Cherry Lane and Meridian, but where would, I'm trying to think, like over there by the village, where we?
Yeah, we're working pretty close with Comm Dev, so as, as plans come in for new development, at least we've put it as a placeholder that in this area, we may need some land, and so they're going to be paying attention to that as well. Some upcoming needs as well that we'll come back to you with. We have been watching our battalion chief workload for about 18 months now. As you know, we have three battalion chiefs. Prior to our one working out of class battalion chief, they were backfilling for each other. For us, that's become a safety concern, it's also become a kind of a work-life balance concern. In a year's worth of data, from October 1 of '18 to October 1 of '19, they've worked an additional 1,197 hours collectively. It's a lot of hours, and that when you work that many extra hours, the burnout starts to happen and safety issues come into play. We did not bring this up during the FY '20 budget discussions. The main reason for that is we didn't have qualified folks to, to promote up to those positions. We do have a test coming up in April of this year, so we'll keep you updated, but I did want to bring it to your attention as part of our update. This is a current challenge for us and probably a future need that we'll have to discuss. And then lastly, Squad 31, I know this has been around a while, it used to be called the ARV program for Councilman Cavanagh and the mayor. Squad 31 is something that we are continually evaluating. The reason that we are evaluating it, the reason we even thought of it in the first place, is to improve Station 1's reliability. We talk about response times, but part of response times is how reliable is our current stations, meaning how often out of Station 1 can Truck 31 or Engine 31 handle a call within that area. Prior to Engine 36 going online, our reliability was 68%. We like to keep it above 80 so that we can make sure we're getting to the calls in the right amount of time. With state, with Engine 36 being housed out of Station 1, responding from Station 1, it's given us a chance to look at, how would that look? What would it do to our performance? Would it improve it? And that's gone up a little over 80%. So it is a marked improvement. The squad is different from just adding another fire engine. That's historically what's been done in the fire department. We add another fire engine to a station. Squad is a two-person apparatus. Costs, new, new engine costs $568,000 today. A squad, we're looking at maybe $300,000, $320,000, two people as opposed to three. We just got done ironically completing an all-day session of priority-based budgeting where we had consultants coming in, talking about what it is and how you then go to the next steps. One of the consultants was from Albuquerque, New Mexico, is the financial analyst, I believe her title was. And as she was presenting priority-based budgeting, she used the example of squads in Albuquerque to help still provide great service to the community, but at a slightly lesser cost than you would typically do. So this is a conversation that will continue. We do have a committee working on the fine details of this, seven members from the line, along with Chiefs Butterfield, Winkler, and Hendrick. So we might be bringing that back to you at some point in the future. And with that, I would say overall, the mantra in the fire department, and I can speak on 91, on behalf of 91 employees, we have, it's an honor to serve and it's a pleasure to serve. And we understand we're a service, and we do it really well. So with that, I'd take any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Madam Mayor and Chief, no questions, just amazingly job well done. I've had the pleasure of being out a little more often than this last year to trainings and then a ride-along, and just never ceased, ceased to amaze me, the customer service that we provide our citizens. But I am happy to hear that you're going to be checking into the assisted living issue, because when I was out with Chief Roundtree, our second call was, we happened to be the closest to assisted living, and so got to see how it could potentially be handled without a full engine.
Yep, absolutely.
So job well done to your entire team.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Chief, presentation I wish we had a full room for, I think is important for our citizens to hear this, and you and your team at all levels just do a great job of being ambassadors of our community. My question, it kind of goes back to your first slide, and really kind of talking about responses. I'm just curious, appreciate you sharing the, the global number, the annual number of responses. Is that a sharp increase, slight decrease, flat in terms of, of years past? I mean, are we seeing more calls for critical service in Meridian, or is it kind of in line with where you'd project them to be?
Our data is very consistent. About 8% growth in call volume every year over the last five years. Ironically, if you look at the population increase, it's right about in the ballpark of our population increase, as I looked at those numbers. So call volume increase tends to correlate to population increase for us.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Any further questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
One quick one. The, the concept of, you stated relocation of Station 1 for a future discussion, how does that occur with the training tower behind it?
Yeah, we're analyzing all of that. Ideally, one option among many that we can explore would be to keep that station and maintain it as a logistics center. One of our challenges as we grow is with the reserve apparatus that we have, that we have to have, where do you house those? And where do you house them where we can maintain them, maintain the equipment on them? With Chief Winkler, he would love to see us keep Fire Station 1, to house those reserve apparatus so that he could keep a little bit of control over making sure they're ready to go. And certainly, we would maintain the tower. That, that training tower is vital to our operation, our training.
When we get to that, Madam Mayor, when we get to that part of the discussion, whenever that occurs, it doesn't seem like relocation is maybe the right way to phrase it, right? It's, it's really not, you're relocating Station 1, but you're still utilizing that property.
Correct, absolutely.
It's not one-for-one necessarily.
Yep.
Didn't seem to be, okay.
True.
Well, and I think Fire Station 1 is a backup to the emergency center at Barrister.
Not to Barrister, it's, it's our city-specific emergency coordination center. Should we have a very specific Meridian event? The EOC at Barrister, the backup to that, is actually over at State Comm, over at ISP.
Madam Mayor, one other question to the, the squad reference, kind of ARV Part II. Is some part of that analysis presume that, that by facilitating multiple units to be deployed from a single station for different purposes, that, that lowers the need for, either delays the need for future stations or allows future stations to be spread out further? And do you, are you able to capture with some big assumptions?
Yeah.
Potential long-term cost savings that?
I think that's part of the analysis. We've certainly talked about that. As you all know, that the truck is housed out of Station 1, and the, the unique challenge with the truck, it doesn't just go to calls within that district, it goes to calls within the entire city. So looking at, as the truck calls increase, how does that affect then the secondary unit and taking those calls away from the truck, if you will? And how do we look at it long-term? I think, I believe, and the next administration may differ, but I believe that a squad implementation to augment services long-term as we look at how we deploy and how we build our stations is a good idea. Because I think it can slightly delay the need for future fire stations if we have those more nimble resources on the road to go meet the demand. So the, the answer anecdotally is yes, but we want some data and some analysis to prove that, with regards to your question about delays.
Sure. I, I think that'd be really helpful.
Yeah.
Because if, you know, Station X is presumed to be needed because we can't get to that area within an acceptable time, the addition of an ARV squad concept, if we ever got to that stage, seems to radically change those response times, which would then
It could.
radically change the basis for adding a station in the first place, so.
Yep. Our biggest challenge, I think you and I have talked about this, Councilman President, the biggest challenge we have is geography, right? Distance. So if we have a, even a squad out of Station 1, and we're talking about calls in the southwest corner, for example, as we grow and build, the distance between point A and point B, even driving safely, is still beyond that five-minute mark. So it's, it's all those things brought in to truly do an analysis of it.
Good.
Thank you, Chief.
Chief.
And thank you to the team. Nice job, Judy, on the PowerPoint.
Good team.
What? Wow, Chief, that is, that's mind-blowing.
I don't believe it.
Good, good job, good information. Thank you. Okay, Item 5B is under community development, and I think Tori is going to join us at the
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. The budget adjustment before you this afternoon is necessary due to the fact that the community match agreement between the city and Verified First was approved September 3 after the fiscal year 2020 budget was adopted. The current annual budget allocation for Meridian Development Community Match Incentives is $75,000. There's an existing $50,000 contractual obligation for a community match disbursement for ICOM, and so the proposed $25,000 budget adjustment is necessary in order to meet this year's contractual obligations with ICOM and Verified First. So, and just FYI, any future necessary budget adjustments will be presented to the council at the same time as a community match agreement, so.
Thank you, Tori. Council, any questions? Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
I move that we approve the budget amendment in the amount of $25,000 for Meridian Development Incentive Verified First.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Item 5B. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
All ayes. Item 5C is also under community development, and it looks like this is really under Public Works.
Madam Mayor, correct?
Kyle, I know you didn't move to community development, right?
Ever. Madam Mayor, loyal to Public Works.
That was smooth.
Loyal, like. Madam Mayor, this, this is a budget amendment in the amount of $257,778 for the ACHD utility improvements in coordination with the ACHD project of Meridian Road, Cherry to Eustick. For FY '20, $550,000 was budgeted for water main extensions. That $550,000 is shared by 10 projects going on. And this is one that was bid out in September, September 25th, and the, the bid for the water portion of the utilities was significantly more than was estimated in the project. The total project bid actually was, the estimate was 4.5 million, and the total project bid out at 5.5 million. So total project bid out high as well. The, the city's water portion bid out significantly high percentage-wise, quite a bit more. But I guess, the only thing I can say about that is sometimes you get lucky and sometimes you don't. Generally, these projects end up, the low bidder ends up being the low bidder for water and sewer also. This was just not the case. I guess I'll stand for any questions. We're asking the council to approve the Meridian Road Utility Improvements Budget Amendment for $257,778 and authorize the mayor to sign the amendment.
Thank you, Kyle. Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Real quick, Kyle, so if I understand correct, the low bidder for the project, the cost related to sewer and water was actually higher than some of the other bidders that were received, that were obligated to go along with this because it's a joint project. Is that accurate?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Cavanagh, that's correct. We do an ACHD co-op agreement, says the award's going to be based on the total low bid, and sometimes we don't get a low bid as well. And this is one of those cases.
Madam Mayor, just, Kyle, just out of curiosity, is this, is it a, a high margin of, of difference between some of the other bidders? Our portion, or is it within a 5% margin?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Cavanagh, this, this particular one was quite a bit higher, and we are scratching our heads to figure out why. But in this case, yes, it was quite a bit higher than the other bids for water.
But weren't they lower, a lower bid for ACHD? Maybe they're making up the difference.
Madam Mayor, you say that somewhat tongue-in-cheek, but I guess that is a concern for, I don't know, question for, again, Kyle, and I apologize, you know, obviously, kind of we've opened up a little bit of a rat's nest on this, but to, to legal, do we have other, other options? I, I hate to think that we're spending more dollars on a project than what would come in if this was bid out individually. I recognize the benefit of, of this joint project, I'm just, I'm always looking out for our, for our rate.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, Councilmember Cavanagh, I, good questions, things that we ask ourselves, too.
Sure.
And I guess one, one point of order is that, you know, once you're in a co-op agreement, you're in a co-op agreement, and it's kind of too late to back out. If you, if you, if you say, "ACHD, you don't, we're just not going to do this," then, then you're going to end up with fire hydrants in the middle of the road, you can't have that, right? Could we, could we, could we do this separate from ACHD? Yes, we could do this separate from ACHD. We've found that by and large, doing a co-op project is much better, and the track record is generally that the low bid for the project is usually, the low bidder awful darn close to the low bid for water and sewer.
Yeah, so this doesn't happen very often.
Madam Mayor, appreciate that. I think, and as we always are improving our process, I guess I look at, when we do a park, we often have different contractors that bid on different pieces, and I don't, I don't know if there is an opportunity in the future with a co-op agreement to provide greater flexibility to the city to be a little more selective, if that is in our community's best interest, I guess, is how I'm looking at it. And if this is an anomaly, kind of a garbage anomaly, don't love that. Nothing against the department, the kind of the position that we're in, I just, if we can explore some other options to give us greater flexibility for our ratepayers, that would be my preference.
Crystal ball. Mr. Neri, did you have any comment?
No, no, Madam Mayor, I think Kyle's answered that, that, well, once we've entered that co-op agreement, we've agreed to go forward with this project. So at this point, we really couldn't change that. Certainly, we could look in the future, as Kyle suggested, but I, I think, like you said, I think we found in the long run, it has benefited the city greater than trying to do these projects separately from the other utilities.
Fair enough. Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. If there's no further questions, do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the budget amendment in the amount of $257,778 for the Ada County Highway District Utility Improvements on Meridian Road.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Item 5C. There's no discussion. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
All ayes, most caring. Item 5D is under our police department. Stephanie is here on a budget amendment for a grant that she sought and received. Welcome, Stephanie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. This evening, I am here to request a budget amendment in the amount of $4,250 for the required match, which is 25% of a grant from Office of Highway Safety to help fund the education and advertising of the new hands-free ordinance. It's necessary because the ordinance is new within this fiscal year, and so it's important that we educate and communicate the information to our citizens. Thank you, Chris, for pulling this up for me. Part of this Office of Highway Safety grant is a collaboration to develop a graphic that will be put on billboards throughout the city and as you enter into the city. And then we also built a 30-second PSA I'd like to show you.
See it, yeah. Gretchen, that's Gretchen.
See, there's sound?
All that beautiful bean footage.
Might recognize a few of the people.
What's up, Gretchen? Shout out to Gretchen.
Oh. There's sound, hang on.
Get over, is she going to get pulled over?
These people have something in common. They are all driving hands-free. No texting, no typing, just driving.
So I can get to work safely.
So I can get my son to school safely.
So I can get to the dog park safely.
So we can get to the movies safely.
Hands-free, so you can get there safely.[1712.15]